Special session of the Eagle Mountain Community Facilities District Board called to order, roll call please.
Chair Kavanaugh?
Here.
Vice Chair LaJee?
Here.
Board Member Magazine?
Here.
Board Member Yates?
Present.
Board Member Hanson?
Here.
Board Member Brown?
Here.
Board Member DePorter?
Thank you.
Any speaker cards on this?
No, Chairman.
Consideration of approving the Eagle Mountain Community Facilities District Board meeting minutes of June 18th, 2015, there's no staff report. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
In a second. Any speaker cards?
No, Chairman.
All in favor?
Aye.
For items two and three, there'll be one staff report. I'll open the public meeting, public hearing regarding resolution EMCFD 2016-01 approving the tentative budget of the district for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2016, and ending June 30th, 2017, setting a hearing date for the budget and annual assessment. Grady?
Nothing really to report on this. As you're aware, this is a community facilities district, and the original public infrastructure improvements that were placed in that particular community were financed through the CFD or the Community Facilities District process. And so before you is the budget for next fiscal year, as well as the proposed tax levying. With that, I would recommend approval.
All right. Board members, any questions or comments? Okay, no speaker cards?
No, Chairman.
I will close the public hearing, consideration of resolution EMCFD 2016-01 is just presented. Any further board discussion? Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Chairman, seven zero.
Okay. I'll adjourn. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now I'll open the special session of the Cottonwoods Maintenance District Board. Call that meeting to order and a roll call, please.
Chair Kavanaugh?
Here.
Chair, Vice Chair LaJee?
Here.
Board Member Magazine?
Here.
Board Member Yates?
Present.
Board Member Hanson?
Here.
Board Member Brown?
Here.
Board Member DePorter?
Here.
Call to the public, any speaker cards?
No, Chairman.
Consideration of approving the Cottonwoods Maintenance District Board meeting minutes of June 18th, 2015, there's no staff report. Any speaker cards?
No, Chairman.
And a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Chairman, seven zero.
Four items, two and three, there'll be one staff report. Open the public hearing, public hearing regarding resolution CMD 2016-01 approving the tentative budget of the district of the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2016, and ending June 30th, 2017, and setting a hearing date for the budget and annual assessment. Grady, please.
Yes, mayor council before you is the annual budget and property tax assessment for next fiscal year for the Cottonwoods Maintenance District. The Cottonwoods Maintenance District was formed for the purpose of maintaining common areas, also contracted costs for landscaping, as well as a reserve amount for future exterior wall maintenance, and also an additional reserve for unplanned maintenance. The property tax assessment is $96.35 per property owner, which is levied by the town and collected by Maricopa County. With that, I recommend approval for this.
Thank you, Grady. Any questions from board members? Any speaker cards?
No, Chairman.
Okay, and I will close the public hearing, consideration of resolution CMD 2016-01 as just presented. Any further board discussion? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we're adjourned. Now, we start our regular meeting, okay? Call our regular town council meeting to order. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for our invocation. Pastor David Felton of the Fountains, a United Methodist Church, is here with us today.
Thank you. Let's pray. Spirit of life, our town council meets tonight to serve our community, to be on about using our resources wisely and well, and to represent all members of our community fairly, making decisions that promote the common good. We recognize this task as a great responsibility to the past and to the future, balancing the rights and the needs of both individuals and community. So may our leaders be open to grace, patience, and wisdom in their deliberations, and may all of us, as fellow citizens, seek to serve one another with compassion and generosity. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Felton. You have a roll call, please, Bev? Again?
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Here.
Vice Mayor LaJee?
Here.
Councilmember DePorter?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Hanson?
Here.
Councilmember Yates?
Present.
And Councilmember Magazine?
All right. Now we have a proclamation of the Sister Cities Organization, and with us tonight is Maricopa County Board Supervisor Steve Chukri. I'm just going to read a small thing about you, Steve, if that's okay. For the past thirteen years, Steve has served as the president and CEO of the Arizona Restaurant Association. Leading an organization that promotes dining out is a perfect fit for Mr. Chukri, who had scorched so many dinners, he had begun to wonder if Burnt was a food group. The insight Steve has gathered through his experience with the Restaurant Association was a contributing factor in his decision to run for public office. In 2012, Steve was elected to serve as Maricopa County Supervisor for District Two, and has been proudly serving his constituents since he took office in January 2013. Steve works with his county colleagues to eliminate excess regulations and create an environment that invites innovation and sustains entrepreneurial growth, I always have trouble with that word, entrepreneurial growth with a best-in-class mindset. Steve remains focused on adopting policies that enhance the business cash of the county, eliminating unnecessary burdens, and implementing strategies that make it more affordable and attractive to operate a business in Maricopa County. Thank you for joining us. Please come up to the podium. And we have members of Sister Cities who are here with us tonight.
You, and, you know, it's been too long, because I'm seeing all these faces, and a few new ones I haven't met, but I miss you all, and I'll start with that. The sheriff called me yesterday, heard I was coming tonight, and he said, "I want to make sure you obey all the speed limit laws in Fountain Hills." And I said, "Of course, Sheriff, I will." So I did. I got here even early, and as only the sheriff can do. But as the mayor and many of you know, I call Fountain Hills my adoptive home. When I campaigned for this job, you really embraced my campaign and all that we were trying to do. So I love Fountain Hills. It's great to be here. When my good friend Enrique Melendez asked me to maybe consider this, I said, "Of course," especially for no finer town in the nine cities and the two Indian communities I represent I have the pleasure to represent in District Two. That being said, I will also share with you that this is my actual first proclamation as a county supervisor. So I think it's even more fitting that it's for this fine town. So if you will indulge me, Mayor, it's not overly long.
Oh, go right ahead.
I'm not too slow of a reader. At least my wife and kids don't maybe not agree with that, but all of you will. So let me read this really quickly. It does say, "Maricopa County proclamation, Fountain Hills Sister Cities. Whereas the Sister City movement became a national effort when President Dwight D. Eisenhower proposed the People-to-People program at a White House conference in 1956. And whereas today, over 2,000 U.S. cities in all 50 states are linked with over 1,800 foreign cities in 123 different countries. And whereas for 60 years, the Sister Cities program has broadened its areas of focus from educational and cultural exchanges to also include technical assistance, trade, and economic development. And whereas these invaluable partnerships offer a forum for fostering and encouraging mutual understanding, friendship, and peace through cultural, social, educational, and economic exchanges. And whereas the town of Fountain Hills has four sister cities, Adaco, El Salvador, Dedro, Germany, let's see, Castroly, Belgium, and Zamask, Poland. And whereas the Fountain Hills Sister Cities Corporation and the town of Fountain Hills have participated in civic activities, cultural and student exchanges, and international public works projects with its sister cities. And whereas the Fountain Hills Sister Cities program has received numerous awards, including a Best Overall Program Award from Sister Cities International. And lastly, whereas the 2016 Annual Sister Cities State Convention will be hosted in the town of Fountain Hills, Arizona, on May 21st, 2016, I will be stuck in Chicago. I apologize, or as I'd be doing this on that special day. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Steve Chukri, Supervisor District Two of the Maricopa County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim May 2016 as Sister Cities Month."
Wow. Thank you. Thank you so much. We hope you'll come back to visit us?
Of course.
Okay, thank you. Very nice. Did you, Ryan, did you want to get a picture of?
My camera did, instead I found out.
Oh, we could do it.
It was fine.
We could do it with mine. You want to, you have got yours?
Me too.
Aye.
Small town USA.
That's a real first for you, Ryan.
I know, but I brought it up. It's a little bit rough.
Right. I'll stay there and smile.
I still like the old speak cameras, because they can do so much better.
Get one, I'm going to do another one.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Take care.
Well done.
Okay. Get some light. All right, and we'll go on to, where we up to? Economic development. Okay, just have a very short report for today from our economic development meeting. Economic development and business growth in town go hand in hand. Last Thursday was a milestone for Fountain Hills as we opened and dedicated the new dialysis center opened by DeVita, a Fortune 500 company, whose name in Italian actually means giving life. The facility will be operated by the Southwest Kidney Institute. This is an amazing, state-of-the-art facility that will service Fountain Hills residents who previously had to travel long distances three times a week for treatment. We can now provide that service right here at home. We thank DeVita and Southwest Kidney for their investment in Fountain Hills, and we thank Fountain Hills resident Jim Judge for his tireless effort for more than three years to bring this facility to our town. Economic Development Committee for MAG, we had a meeting, we got an update on the ongoing partnership between Arizona and Sonora, Mexico. We continued work on pathways for the business and education communities to work together to strengthen and grow our economy, and we again discussed economic development revolving around spring training. And that is my report. We'll go on to call to the public. Do we have any speaker cards?
Here, we have three cards. Bob Kuick, and then Sam Coffey, and then Rick Melendez.
Okay. Bob?
I live on Malta Drive here in town. Last Saturday evening, my wife Judith Martin and our two dogs were attacked by four to six javelina that emerged from the wash, also known as the Wildlife Migratory Corridor, right in front of our house, knocked her down, and chewed on her. She's had surgery, and she's at home convalescing now. The response of our neighbors, MCSO, and the town EMTs was outstanding, made me proud to be a resident of Fountain Hills. The four Arizona Fish and Game officers who investigated the incident were spectacular, responsive, detail-oriented, and have indicated to me that they will begin an effort by policing the area early in the morning and at dusk to see if javelinas can be relocated. They interviewed me, our neighbors, and my wife at the hospital following her surgery. Now for the not-so-great part. Artistic landscaping management is cleaning the wash, starting at Saguaro and working its way westward. I talked to the crew chief, and I talked to Raymond Reese from the Environmental Department, and was told that they were going to cease operations quite soon because of fiscal and time constraints, and the fact that it was getting warmer, and there were more critters in the wash. Mr. Reese and the manager from the company indicated that they had been working on the wash for seven months since November. I did a survey of some of my neighbors and the postal carrier, who's in the neighborhood five out of seven days a week. I'm including myself in the survey. We have not seen evidence of work in that wash for seven months, perhaps three weeks. And they have moved at a relatively slow rate, and I realize it's getting warm. They're not going to finish getting to our end of the wash. And it could be, according to the game and fish people, that the pressure of the work that they've done is moving these animals west. The wash ends at Hawk Drive. The school district owns some property in that area, as you probably all know. There are going to be warmer temperatures, people walking earlier and later, perhaps at dark. The fish and game folks thought this attack was bizarre, unusual. I agree. I mean, I'm not a rookie when it comes to the outdoors and animals, and it might have been a fluke, but it was a fluke that almost killed my wife. I would like to ask that the council consider expediting, finishing, the clearing out of this wash, and also consider reinstituting action among the Public Safety Committee, which I understand was disbanded over a year ago because of a lack of work to do. I think there is a great deal of work to do in educating people in Fountain Hills about not feeding javelina, giving them access to water through water features in their front yards, educational activities that could be accomplished through the newspaper, the community activity center, and in any other variety of ways that might be considered. I think that if the council wanted to interview more people there, they would also find that perhaps there's a real instance of you get what you pay for with artistic landscape management. They say seven months. No one has seen them for longer than three or four weeks in that area. I don't know if that's a governmental efficiency problem or their efficiency problem, but it certainly would merit some kind of examination. I love Fountain Hills. I've worked with the Trail Blazers. I know Bill Myers and Bill Craig. They're great people. My wife has worked on the Trail Blazing Crew, and she might not be able to do that because of the damage she sustained to her left arm. I would ask that the council consider what could be done to expedite the finish of the clearing of the wash before next year, which is when I'm told it might have, might be completed. I think that reinstituting the Public Safety Committee would also be something I would ask that you consider. I thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. And while we can't comment on everything, anything that you said, it's, I just want to assure you that we will look into the issues that you've brought up today, and that I've been in contact with game and fish myself, and I'll be communicating with them to make sure that things are accomplished to your satisfaction.
Yeah, appreciate it.
We're also very sorry what happened to your wife, and we wish her well. Good speedy recovery. Okay.
Mayor, I want to ditto that comment. I mean, a very tragic situation, and feel horrible. We will be coming back with a report on the wash maintenance at the next meeting, so that you're aware of what we are doing and what the actual schedule is. So we will come back at the next meeting.
Great, thank you, Grady. Next?
That would be Sam Coffey?
Okay.
I'm Sam Coffey, and I live on La Montana Drive. And I would like to address the council regarding the Fourth of July event being planned for the park. Yesterday, we met with the mayor and town staff to discuss the plan for the celebration. We were blindsided by the plan to ostensibly make the event more family-friendly. The mayor was kind enough to enlighten us regarding what she considers family-friendly. This included eliminating the fence and entrance fees. Beer sales were also a casualty of this plan. Basically, the event we put on the last two years was gutted. Now perhaps some of you are in support of this plan, but you will forgive me if I'm somewhat baffled by it. Perhaps a little history lesson is in order. About four years ago, Christine Colley went to Brian Hughes in Parks and Rec to talk to him about reinstituting the Fourth of July. At that point, Christine was told by the town that it just wasn't feasible to do that. So about two years ago, Phyllis Kern and Christine got back together and put together a plan to reinstitute the Fourth. They went to the town and asked for the town's participation to provide 50% of the cost of the fireworks, which was done. I was asked to work with this group, and in putting this thing together, we actually put together two Fourth of July celebrations that were a lot of fun for people and provided a lot of entertainment and fireworks. Now the town decided to change the plan and wants to tell us how to run this event. The reason why I'm baffled is for the, after the last two events, we had numerous project reviews, and at no time was there any discussion of more than one or two complaints about the entrance fees, and/or we had some complaints about people not liking the sidewalks closed. All the feedback we got was extremely positive. Why do all these complaints only surface now? And it just boggles my mind, since we're just starting the planning stage of this thing. It's like people are coming out of the woodwork to complain about, about what's going on with entrance fees. I'm puzzled. If this was a problem, and the event was perceived to be family and friendly, why are we just now hearing about it? Excuse me if I thought the family event was friendly, the event was family-friendly before. I have my grandkids and my four great-grandchildren come down to all of the events we put on, and, you know, they kind of think it's fun. It turns out that it's a family event for them. It's friendly. I don't know why we're doing this with October, with the Fourth of July. We put the same format on for Oktoberfest and St. Patrick's Day, and for some reason or another, they're okay. I mean, figure that one out. I don't understand the difference. What kind of logic or sense of fairness says that you let a group make a success out of something, and then your government, who should be trying to help us be successful? And when we first started this thing back eight years ago, when Christine and I put together the Oktoberfest, we had a very, very cooperative town. People had bent over backwards to help us. But now, we got the government taking over this event. That is, except, as it turns out, if this event loses the money, which now you're losing all this revenue from the beer, the events, the food, and the gates. If the town, if this event loses money, do you think the town's going to pick up that cost? We were told no. It's our problem. Over the last eight years, the organizers of this event have worked tirelessly to put on all these events. We've been able to provide charities, veterans, and various service organizations around town about $100,000 in benefits through our efforts on these events. That's a lot of money.
Can you try to wrap it up a little bit? You weigh all the time.
All right. The mayor says the charities are, that we should leave all the money in town. Well, I give my, we go down to the VA, and if somebody wants to go down and meet a VA hospital, the manor house, and Mary Ellen's place, and tell me those are really bad places to put money, I'm lost. I really am. And we thought we had a meeting next week to discuss how we were going to go with this, but we just got a note from the paper saying that they've been, Linda's been down to the paper and told them this is all done, deal. Why are we having this meeting? Because apparently it's already been decided. Again, I'm just looking for the town.
Okay, you're out, you're out of time. Thank you. And, and I, because I was just criticized for something that's not true, I did not go to the paper. You went to the paper, and the paper contacted me for a comment, so I did not go to the newspaper. And anyone, anyone who wants to know about that can speak to the Times reporter, Bob Charzak, about that. She contacted me.
Mayor, could I ask Grady a question?
We can't really discuss this because it's not agendized.
I just want to ask for some, we can come back to us for something? The same as with the javelinas?
We can do that during, direct to the manager. Just make a note of that, okay?
Okay.
Do you have any other speaker cards?
Rick Melendez.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Kavanaugh, Vice Mayor LaJee, council members, and staff. This is the last time you're going to see me speaking before your council as a former council member, but I thought the timing is appropriate because of the budget and what's happening to our employees. First of all, I want to thank my good friend Supervisor Chukri for coming all the way from downtown and present the proclamation on behalf of the Sister Cities. And I want to thank you, Mayor, and Grady Miller, and Mark Mayer, Raymond Reese, for what you did this week. For those of you who are not aware, we dedicated a plaque and a beautiful painting of the Grand Canyon and Community Center on behalf of a great individual, a giver. His name is Carlos Haddaway. So I want to thank you for that. And for those of you who haven't had the opportunity to see this plaque and this painting, please, please go there. Secondly, I would like to thank you again, Mayor, and Grady Miller, and for bringing the two Sister Cities signs to our community. And a special thanks to council member Dennis Brown, who through his company, Echelon Company, one of the finest builders in the state of Arizona, donated his labor and materials, and those signs are wonderful. The, the reason I'm here is because I've been out of town, and I read the paper the other day, and it, I saw a column by our editor, our publisher, Alan Krukschank, talking about the budget. And it alarmed me because I've always felt that our employee base is what makes us vibrant and what makes Fountain Hills. And I know the council has been considering a raise for the employees. I highly approve of that. I'm not, I haven't been involved in the budget since 13 years ago, when I sat where Cassie Hanson is, in the old building. But I think it's important that we realize that we're shorthanded. I think we're 10 to 15 employees down, and I encourage the council and the town manager to take a look at increasing the workforce. And at the same time, I know budgets are very, very difficult to manage, pay attention to our employees. The last thing is, I was going through some files, and I picked up this newspaper article, which had my picture on it. I was all over the newspaper, and it says Fountain Hills staffs is thanked with extra day off. Vice Mayor Rick Melendez filed an executive order, giving staff members a day off with pay on Friday to allow them to, a day with their families. Before I did this, did I talk to the town manager? No. Did I talk to the mayor? No. Did I talk to our town attorney? No. Was it the right thing to do? Without a doubt.
Those are the old days.
Those were the old days. Thank you, Mayor. But what it did, and it instilled a spirit of vigor with the employees, because we had had a bad time, we were struggling between the Marshals Department, the sheriff, and so forth. Bringing that up only to show that we can do better, and hopefully, Mayor, we can provide an increase in staff and maybe a healthy raise for our employees. Thank you very much.
All right.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Thank you. Sure, absolutely.
I need to correct the record a little bit.
I was asked to stand the signs up, and I held my hand up and said, absolutely, I'd love to. The signs arrived, and I had two men that were out ill. And before they got back, Justin Weldy of the town and the town staff actually assembled the signs and set them. So you have to tip your hat to Justin Weldy on that one. Thanks, Rick. I appreciate the punch, though. Thanks.
Okay. Any other speaker cards, Mayor? All right, then we go on to our...
I can, if Miracle Academy can give assistance on that wash issue, I'd be more than happy to help.
Okay. No, that's all right. Well, thank you. All right. Supervisor Chukri has just offered to lend us assistance with the wash issue that we just heard about in relation to the Havelinas. So we're very grateful for that. Thank you. All right, consent agenda items. Number two has been pulled from the consent agenda at the request of the staff. So we are now going to vote on one, three, four, and five. Can I get a motion to approve as, as listed?
Go move.
And a second?
Second.
And a roll call, please?
Councilmember DePorter?
Aye.
Councilmember Magazine?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Leje?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Yates?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Mayor, seven zero.
Thank you. Regular agenda items, consideration of professional services agreement, C 2016 dash 250 with Hunt and Caraway Architects Ltd. For the fire station number two, architectural services in the amount of $315,197.20. April, okay, this, just to note that this was moved to this meeting from April 21st. Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, the item before you, as the mayor indicated, was requested to be pulled by Councilmember Brown because he had additional questions regarding the proposed contract for the professional services agreement. Staff met with Councilmember Brown as late as this week and tried to understand the concerns that he had, and it really came down to the process. It wasn't really so much that there was an issue, for instance, with the firm, but it's really the RFQ process as stipulated under state law. There's basically a state statute that dictates if you go through a, to hire a professional services firm, and those are all outlined as to what those are, you know, it's either architectural services or engineers and such, and it has an outline of how you go through that process. We went through that process. We, we had a very detailed scope of services that outlined this particular project. And had we gone through maybe a direct select process, we might have been able to get a firm for, for less money. But because we've already gone down a path, there was a fork in the road, and we went down this particular fork. We're pretty much tied to finishing up this process. And if we did not award a contract to this particular firm that is before you tonight, then we would need to reject this and then go to one of the next two that were the finalists for this, and then possibly reject those. There's a risk that any of the other two would be, would be higher. The other thing is, if we go through and we, let's just say we were to go through and reject all three of the firms that were the finalists for this particular professional services agreement process, then if we were to do a direct select from any of them, then there would be a good chance that we'd have a protest or potential claim against the town. My focus on this has really been all about saving money, and I think we could save money on the professional services. But I really think the opportunity to save money is on the construction costs. This is roughly about 10% of the cost. The contract ultimately for constructing this could be 3 million plus. And so I think possibly saving on the cost of the building and the design is very critical. So I think what I would recommend is approval of this tonight for us to continue down this path. Also, the longer we wait on schedule, also can cost us as well as far as project costs or construction costs. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Any questions for Grady? Do we have any speaker cards on this item?
No, Mayor.
Questions? No? Okay. Then I can make a motion, please.
A motion to approve the professional service agreement, C 2016 250 with Hunt Caraway Architects Limited for the fire station number two, architectural services in the amount of $315,197.20.
Mayor, second?
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, seven zero.
Consideration of resolution 2016 dash 06, setting forth the tentative budget and establish the maximum budget amount for the town of Fountain Hills for fiscal year 2016 dash 2017. The council may address any and all items contained in the budget document and initiate any changes prior to the adoption. Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, before you tonight is the tentative budget for fiscal year 1617. This budget is fully balanced and compliant with state of Arizona requirements. Since the town council special session that was held on, on April 19th, there were a few minor changes that were made to the budget. One of the, the minor changes, at the time, we were being very conservative on the revenue projections for next year. And the state shared revenue, it turns out, we had projected to be 2% less in the current year, but actually came back roughly $480,000, $490,000 more. So we needed to go ahead and plan and allocate that, and we have since put that towards state shared revenue, I'm sorry, we have since put that in contingency. The, the primary reason for the increase is the economy is obviously improving, and the pie just got bigger, but our slice of the pie in reality is actually a little bit smaller than what it has been in the past. And so we're being cautiously optimistic at this point that the legislature won't do anything that might harm us or, you know, touch the money. But as far as we can see at this point, it doesn't appear that anything's going to happen with that. Another change is that at the April 19th meeting, the council had recognized with the increased revenues and the fact that we have a super, you know, super employees who work for the town, and that they had really gone for a number of years without having either regular raises or when they had, they were relatively meager. And so the council on April 19th had suggested that we go as high as, as 3.5%. We've gone ahead and programmed 3.5% into the budget based on, on the direction that the council gave us. And that was very easy to do since our contingency budget was, was increased by the amount of the state shared revenue. We went ahead and reduced that by roughly 30,000. So we were looking at the raises costing approximately 75,000. So it went up by 30,000 to 105,000. I'll just kind of talk a little bit about the process, and then we're going to have a formal presentation by Craig Rudolfi, our finance director. First of all, very quickly, just wanted to let you know that all the departments, this was a bottom-to-the-top process, and all the department heads and their staff did a super job in trying to prepare the budget for next year. One thing that we did that was different than what we've done in past years is that all the departments were instructed to budget fiscal year 1516 base budget as their base budget for next year, knowing that we were going to be facing more difficult budgets in the future. They were instructed that any new programs or services, staffing, or other non-based, non-based budget items were to be submitted as budget supplements. That was so that we wouldn't have to go through the trouble of, of having our staff input these into the budget and then having all that time and effort to take it back out once it was determined that we didn't have sufficient resources. Those budget supplements were evaluated based on the following criteria. Is there a dedicated revenue source to pay for the new program or service? Is the budget request one-time or ongoing? And does the budget supplement address issues involving operational efficiencies, safety, council priority, or a strategic, strategic plan priority? We basically had over $1.5 million of new requests for the budget, of which I recommended approximately a half million of that for ongoing supplements. Another item I just wanted to bring to your attention is that there is a reorganization that is proposed for next year, and that would be bringing back the public works department that we once had and having Paul Mood serve as the new director. Pretty much, that would be the streets function, as you know, now. It does not make sense, in my professional opinion, to have a very broad department with a person at the department director level over something as varied as planning, building, engineering, and public works and capital improvements. It just seems like we're going to be needing to focus in the future on such things as facilities replacement, the next major bond issue, our payment management program. Those are very top priorities of this council. And so I did this in anticipation of trying to put more emphasis in those areas. So I think with, with the talent of Paul Mood, I think we're going to be able to really address those. Another area that we made some changes, it caused a lot of pain to the staff, but I think it's going to pay off in the long run. We had a number of program codes for all of our expenditures. In program, when you're, when you're dealing with budgets, you typically have, for a number of different services, they're, they're called programs. But we had a very complex system for a very small town. And so we had, as an example, a number of our program codes were charged to, you know, like payroll was charged to multiple program codes. So for instance, Mark Mayer, I believe he had eight to 10 that his salary and benefits were charged to. And it was like that throughout the entire organization. So we really consolidated and simplified that. It's going to mess up the history for the next two years, so when you kind of look at the budget, it's going to look kind of screwy. But the staff is going to be very pleased with this because it's going to be very easy now that they don't have to, you know, steal from Peter to pay Paul when they need to do things for their departments because the money will be more in a central location. They don't have to be doing that. The other thing we did was we created a general government cost center to place what I would call town-wide expenditures. This would be like the community contracts, town-wide memberships, dues, and contingency. Contingency previously was in the town manager's office budget. I didn't feel comfortable with that there. I thought it was more of a, of a town-wide need. So if there's ever a need for departments, it should be in that location. Any other thing that we have in the future, that will be a location where we have a home for that. That's about all I have for my introductory remarks. If there's no questions, I'd like to go forward with the formal presentation and have Mr. Rudolfi give the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. This presentation is a slimmed-down version of the one that you saw at the special session on the budget. So I'll go through rather quickly. If you have any questions, feel free to stop me, and I can elaborate on those. This is the total of our tentative budget, $40 million, 484,193. And if you recall from the conversation earlier, there's some discussion is, well, how do we handle transfers? Transfers, when you move it from one place to another place, you can't count it twice. So in the past, we have, and this number reflects counting it twice. According to the Auditor General's reports that we need to file, we need to report our budgets without transfers. So going forward in future years, we're going to have a significantly lower number for the budget, but that's primarily because we're reducing and eliminating transfers from that amount. Comparable numbers for prior years, which would include all the transfers, are shown here. This is a breakdown by department and division, by department, for what the core services of the town are. Our assumptions, revenue projections, we did the best that we could using trends as well as some guesses. Building permits will include permits for Adaro Canyon, Fire Rock, and Summit at Crestview. And as, as Town Manager mentioned, the cost of living adjustment of 3.5%. Didn't include any inflation for fiscal '17, 2.5% for '18, and 3.5% for '19, '20, and '21. We must, as always, adhere to the state-imposed expenditure limitation, which may come into play. It was a factor in prior years. This year is not as much of a factor. Our public safety contracts, 7% for MCSO. We had, had anticipated prior to the start of the process of a 10% increase for MCSO. Fortunately, it was only 7. And rural metro contract is a 3%. Still unclear as to our construction sales tax revenue. The governor is still of the opinion that we should eliminate the current construction sales tax and go to point-of-sale, which will have a significant impact on town revenue. And as you know, the former state trust land has been reverted back to State Land Department, so there are no projections included for any development in state trust. New staff of 1.63, as Town Manager mentioned, a new public, new development services, I'm sorry, new public works director, and then a part-time accounting clerk. We have built-in costs for election, and the last line is the debt payment subsidy that the general fund is having to contribute to retire the bonds for the community center. These are our major capital projects, the big ones being fire station number two and Adaro Canyon. All told, $9,312,000. This is what our outstanding bonds will be at the end of the next fiscal year, $10,000,000, $10,740,000. Eagle Mountain, which is a secondary property tax levy paid off in '21. The revenue refunding are the community center bonds. They are due July of '20. And then the towns' GO bonds are in '19 and '20. This is our projections. As you can see, the blue line would like to be above the red bar, but we can't make that happen right now. These are the items that are addressed in our budget. And then the strategic plan goals that council has addressed, has, has set for us and that we've addressed. The highlights, as Town Manager mentioned, there were approximately 1.5 million in supplemental requests, of which a half a million were funded, and this is where the funding was. Comparing the total budget, the 30 million in revenues and the 40 million in expenditures, so we're essentially using almost $10 million in reserves for this year. This is just showing the same numbers, slightly different. And this is breaking it down by department and division. The $1,451 in the change column is what is, this is what is composed of, primarily the supplementals, the increase in contingency, public safety factors, and as you can see, only 130,000 was the result of other changes to the budget. Our fund balances at the end of fiscal '17 is going to be 12 million, 12.5 million. Some people may think that's a lot of money. For a town, that's not a lot of money. This is our ORC chart showing any new or created positions that we have. As you are all aware, our FTEs are significantly below what we were previously. 43 full-time, 23 part-time. And the 3.5% increase, as Town Manager mentioned, is a little over 100,000. And this is how our personnel costs break down. Total FTE of 53.95. That includes the part-timers as well as the full-time. Once again, that's our bottom number that we're asking for your approval. And this is the step. Tonight, we're going to adopt the proposed budget. And then we come back on June 2nd for the final budget and later for the tax levies. Any questions? Any questions?
Questions for Craig? Do we have any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
No?
Madam Mayor.
Okay.
Craig, real quick, if you could elaborate more on, I realize we're going into reserves for the 10 million, but could you elaborate on why and how, and why it was necessary?
The how was in prior years, the construction sales tax was significant, and those monies were devoted to both the general fund and the capital improvement fund. Those revenues resulted in a reserve of roughly 10 to 15 million dollars in the capital improvement fund. With the construction that we have had over the last couple of years, primarily that reserve has been reduced. Also, in the proposed budget, we are making two separate $1 million transfers out of the general fund reserves, which was an accumulation of excess revenues over anticipated expenditures. The first million dollars is going to fund the facilities replacement reserve, and the second million dollars is going to be going into the capital improvement fund to allow for some more expenditures in that fund.
And if I may, just for clarification, Craig, do you want to talk a little bit about how surplus in the past had been the policy, and that's why we're putting 1 million dollars back into capital reserves?
Our financial policies stated that any excess revenues would go to the capital improvement fund. In the mid-2000s, that was working fine, and we were distributing the money to the general reserve, from the general reserve into capital improvement. When we started to hit rough times in 2008, 2009, we did not make those transfers. In fact, I believe in 2010 or '11, we actually incurred a million-dollar shortage in the general fund. So as a result of that, and for a reason that I cannot explain, subsequent to that time period of about 2010 or '11, any surplus revenues remained in the general fund. So over time, the general fund has been built up instead of having it transferred to the capital improvement fund.
Any other questions for Craig? Councilman Magazine?
Yeah, Craig, a couple of questions. The MCSO increases 7%. How much of that is pension catch-up? Do we know?
I do not know. They do not break it out separately.
Do you know how they get to the 7%?
They haven't provided, the MCSO contract is a cost reimbursement contract, so whatever their costs are, they pass on to us. When we get their contract, all they show by category are, here are the costs for that category. They're not saying, well, we're going to take a 5% increase across the board for each category.
So just explain that. So we're always a year in a rear. So based on last year is what they have given us in January of this year for next year. So it's that way on the cost recovery contract that we have. And so, but we have been told, because of the public safety retirement pension system, and the fact that they are underfunded themselves, that that is a big driver to their overall budget, and that is, we're kind of indirectly paying for that through the contract. But just only for those, our proportional part of the costs, not like paying for the entire agency.
But shouldn't we know more of the specifics as to how they derive the 7% versus 8% or 10%? Shouldn't we be digging into that a little bit further to see what, you know, cost recovery is fine, but is it anything they say it is? I mean, how do we, I'm not saying anything untoward is happening, I'm just saying, but shouldn't we have a better understanding as to how they got to that percentage, rather than, it sounds like we're taking it on face value?
You know, all the managers and I are kind of in that same boat, and my understanding, this has been the way it has been for a long time. I'm not justifying it, but I'll also tell you that the contract doesn't have a lot of other, we're not paying for a lot of other services that are included. For instance, all the administrative overhead, the insurance, all those things would really cost us a lot, particularly on the liability insurance. So to your point, yes, it would be nice to be able to get into and drill down to get to that. They just don't, they do it by category, and they say that this is based on the actual costs that we incurred for the prior year. And so I understand where you're coming from, but that's...
Yeah, my, I mean, my understanding is that we're getting a very good deal. And that's probably the case, but I've had questions asked by constituents about how we get to this number and that amount of money. And I just think we should think about what questions to ask for next year.
Sure.
So that we can explain how we get the 7% or the 10% or whatever it is.
And we can also scale it down. So if you want to look at reducing beats, which I'm not sure there's interest in that, that's also a way that you can get the budget numbers down. And so they gave us the formula, how you figure that out, but that's another way that we can have control over, you know, what we pay for law enforcement.
And I'm not necessarily suggesting we go down that road. I'm just saying, I would feel better understanding how you get to the number, that's all.
Sure.
Another question, and I...
Can I just, can I say something about that? I think for years, and I'm not, I can't remember, because I didn't go back and look at that non-anticipating this question, I think they were around 3% every year before the PSPRS kicked in. Every year, it was kind of around 3%. Does anyone remember? You think so, Vice Mayor, that it was around 3%? So they were consistently just around 3%. And I think this is the first year that it's been bumped up, and that's because of the PSPRS.
Mayor Kavanaugh.
That was 10% last year, wasn't it?
It was 10% last year, and it went down to 7% this year.
Right.
But it's only been the last few years, though.
Right. I'm saying since they, you know, started doing policing here, it was always consistently around the same amount, around 3%. And then when this kicked in with the PSPRS, then that extra percentage was added on, whereas nothing else was added. So that's just, you know, just to give you some idea if that helps a little.
Yeah, no, that helps. But I'm, you know, we're looking for every dollar we can find, and I'd just like to better understand it, that's all. Another issue, and this has been raised by a couple of constituents as well, if we say, which we do, that we're facing a $6 million cumulative shortfall by 2000, what, '21?
Correct.
How can we come up with $1 million for the facility reserve fund? Is this sort of like deficit financing?
As I explained, the monies, the excess revenues over the last four or five years has been kept in the general fund. So we are using those revenues, those reserves, to make the initial funding into the facilities replacement fund. There has been no other provision for funding out of operations, the $1 million going forward.
Well, let me ask you this question, just for the sake of argument, or discussion, I should say. If we didn't put $1 million in the facilities reserve fund, it would then have been available for other things, obviously, that weren't approved. Or it could considerably result in less than a $6 million cumulative shortfall going forward. Is that correct?
That is incorrect, because the...
That's not the answer I wanted.
I understand. The $1 million is one of the numbers included in the transfers that isn't a really expenditure. So we're just moving the money from the general reserves into the facilities replacement reserve.
And I assume it's fungible?
Yes. But the, I believe, the budgeted amount for expenditures in facilities replacement is only about $300,000. So the difference of the 700,000 theoretically could be available for other purposes.
And if I could just jump in, I mean, you raise a very good question, or point. One of the things that we have committed to the council is that the Finance Director and I will be coming back with a policy on the facilities replacement fund. And one of the things that we'll be looking at is how we're going to have the ongoing funding for that. As you recall during the work session, the consultants that presented the plan and a recommended plan was for, you know, 100% funding. Most cities that we're finding would be somewhere in between zero, which we're kind of not far from that, and 50 to 70% is the, you know, and so I'm thinking we should strive for a goal of somewhere between 50 to 70% with the ultimate goal of trying to get to 100%, if we can afford that. One of the things that I think there's an opportunity to do is, right now, we have approximately $400,000 a year that is going towards the debt service on the community center. There might be a possibility, if it's possible, we haven't really looked into this, but there might be a possibility that we retire those early. Again, that might take some reserves to do that, but then that $400,000 that's freed up will be ongoing every year that goes into that replacement fund. And then any surplus we have, and we don't know revenue-wise if something comes up in the future, if we can address the shortfall, then that 400,000 would be a baseline, plus some amount above that of what we can afford. So that's just some ideas on what we're kind of kicking around right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Craig? Councilman Yates.
Craig, to go a different direction, and Grady, feel free to jump in. Recently, on my own staff, and I have a staff similar to size, I've been doing some cost containment and efficiencies, and I found that through some efficiencies, I was able to keep more people on. I know we had discussed about a cost containment or requisitions officer, and I know part of their main position would be to save on how we buy things, and through that efficiency create a savings. So my, I guess my question is, in the event we want to pursue hiring a new person, what tools would we need to do, or study would we need to do to say, hey, if we hired this person, we could probably save, and I'm using round numbers, $80,000, and this person might only cost us $65,000. What tools would we need to do to give you that, or is that something we could pursue down the road without having to make a major budget change? Because I really do think, I know we're short-staffed, 15 people, but this is one of those staff positions that almost pays for itself. So I guess we'll start with you, or...
I would prefer to refer to Town Manager.
Refer to Grady.
Very good point. I would tell you, the major savings is probably the amount of time that all of our staff is involved. It's more of freeing up time for them to do their jobs, rather than be the individual departments procurement officers, because that's what, that's what we have right now. And Craig is like the procurement police, and he's also the expert on procurement, having worked in a large agency, with a very large budget. He has a very good handle on this. But I would tell you, most of it is going to be savings and hours that our staff spends on procurement matters. And probably would also take some of the load off of the attorney as well. That's not going to reduce the attorney's, you know, amount of time, but once we get into a groove, I think that would be very much there. Also, I think some of these different cooperative purchasing contracts that are out there, or agreements, we've taken advantage of a lot of these, the Mojave, and there's a number of these that we are members of. And so I think that we're doing a really good job on the purchasing side. So I think we're taking advantages of, you know, good practices to save money, but it's really, I think, the staff time that would save.
Madam Mayor. But we could quantify that, all right? The staff savings still equates to more productivity, which we can assess a dollar value, which would justify the position.
Yes.
Basically, I'm asking, what would we need to do at this level to pursue that, or at least look into that? Or is it approve the budget as needed, and then whenever we look at it, we can have that discussion down the road? I don't want to tip the apple cart, but just saying...
I would say, it is a priority that hasn't gone away. I know when Ken Buchanan was manager, it was a priority of his as well, and I made a play for it last year with just evaluating the organization, and he accepted that that was something that we needed to move towards. And I actually, after seeing all the different requests that we had for staff this year, I felt really bad because there were a lot of really good arguments for their positions as well. So, but I do think that this would be one that would actually help everybody. And so I think what would be best is to continue to evaluate it and maybe do something next year, through next year's budget process.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions for Craig? Grady, unless item? Okay. If not, then thanks, Craig. I'm going to ask for a motion.
Mayor moved to approve Resolution 2016-6.
Mayor's second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, 7-0.
Okay. Next is discussion with possible direction to staff regarding the possible submission of proposed policy ideas to the Arizona League of Cities and Towns for consideration by the Resolution Committee at the League's annual conference. Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. The item before you is a request from the League. We received communications from the League staff recently indicating a desire for us to, as one of many cities and towns, to provide policy direction to the League. A couple of years ago, they reformed the League and how they do League resolutions, and there's a policy committee. And so what I have asked you through this agenda item is to identify those items that you feel that would be very important for the League to pursue as policy items. And if you are not prepared to do so tonight, if you could get those to us perhaps by the next meeting, that would be great. There's actually, if you see in the packet, right behind this action form, there is a form that they have used, that they wish that we would submit, if there are any. Again, that's just if you have any suggestions for next year.
And there'll also be a lot coming out of other cities that we could jump on, too.
Exactly. So just to explain the process, there is a committee that will review these, and then if they feel that there's some merit, they may say, this is something that's a good practice. It might be something that we might have a model city ordinance or town ordinance. Another step might be that it might go to the next level, which is, this ought to be something that should be part of the legislative agenda for the next session of the legislature. At the League each year, these resolutions are voted on. And so that's why it's pretty important, and as you've seen with this particular legislative session, and the potential harm that has either been averted or has come to us, it's very important for us to be very active with this particular agenda item. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Yeah, and this year, they've done a little bit different, actually, last year and this year, is they divided up, the executive committee can be on different subcommittees. So for instance, I'm on the public safety, military veterans. So if there's any resolutions that come out related to those things, they would go to that individual committee. And then they have other committees with other mayors that would look at all of the other resolutions that come in related to, whether it's economic development, or like the facilities districts, or anything like that. And then after that, those subcommittees vet those, see what, how much support there is from various cities, and then those go to the entire executive committee to review. So they did that. It kind of makes it a little bit easier for smaller groups to look at, because sometimes there's a lot of these that come in. But anyway, that's it. That's all I have to add to that. Anybody else? Any questions? No? Okay. All right. Then we'll go on to legislature. Does anybody have anything to that, except it looks like tomorrow might be the last day, and they'll be done, the budget's done, and now they're just doing bills? Anything? I don't have anything. Council, direction to the Town Manager? Councilman Magazine? Do you remember what you work on?
Yes, thank you. I have two items. If Mayor and Council are in agreement, I wonder if we could at some point get a presentation on performance appraisal, and how they're conducted, some of the details, and so on.
You bet.
Secondly, I either missed it, missed the meeting, or was asleep, but I don't recall any discussion of these changes regarding the 4th of July celebration. Did we discuss those as a council?
This was just a...
This was an internal matter that...
It was a staff discussion.
With the staff.
Well, could I suggest that council be informed in some fashion as to what was decided, and perhaps the rationale?
Sure. And again, no decision's been made... Sure, and no, again, no decision's been made. We were having a follow-up meeting next Wednesday at 2:00 PM with Fountain Hills Events, Inc. So we will be happy to come back with a, a report on that.
And Councilman Brown?
Thank you. Grady, I'd like to, I'd like staff to look at the limits that are set for the direct bid process.
Okay, good point.
Look at that and, and see if it's properly set or needs to be adjusted.
Will do. That actually came up during a review of the architectural services for the fire station, and realized that we do have an issue there. We'll do that.
Okay, anything else? Then we'll on to reports on activities by any individual council member or town manager. Councilman Yates, I'd like to go first.
Real quick, two weeks ago, I had the honor and privilege of welcoming the American Cancer Society's Relay for Life to Fountain Park. Lois Nuthalls, who's the chairman in our committee, did an incredible job. We heard from Donna Neidig, one of the cancer survivors. Last year, we raised a little over $30,000, and this year, it looks like we're going to raise over $40,000. You can Google Relay for Life Fountain Hills, there's still time to donate, they take you around. But the, on a side note, the economic impact on top of just the inspiration of all this going on, it was an event that lasted all day, literally into the night. I had to go down and, and watch it at the wine bar there to make sure things kept going.
You watched it at the wine bar, no wonder you want to do that one. I want to thank Councilman Yates for representing the town for the second year in a row at that event.
My pleasure.
I'd like to congratulate the Chamber of Commerce, first on its very successful Chamber Gala. I personally think it was one of the best galas in a very long time. I want to congratulate Scott Holdout Valenzuela, the CEO of the Chamber, Sharon Morgan, the events coordinator, along with their team, Paige, Karen, and Diane. Noon Rotary held a fundraiser information event at Fountain Park last Saturday to raise money for the Rotary Community Musical Park. This is the park area filled with large musical instruments that everyone can play on, will be a wonderful addition to Fountain Park. Contact the Noon Rotary and find out how you can donate to help this happen. And also, they had wanted to thank Marita of Euro Pizza for donating part of the proceeds of that day to the musical instrument park. And as Council Melendez mentioned, we dedicated the beautiful oil painting of the Grand Canyon, which had been donated previously by Carlos Hadoway, along with the plaque hanging in our community center. We thank Carlos for this wonderful donation and for his years of dedication to our town. Fearless Kitty Rescue, winners of the Republic Services $10,000 grant last year, and winner of the Chamber Mayor's Award, had a ribbon cutting at Kittyville. The organization does an incredible service for our community. We congratulate them on all their accomplishments, and there are many, many kittens up for adoption. So if you're thinking about, you have kids, they love cats, they know that. Yeah? You need one more, make it even four. Okay, does anyone else have anything? If not, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned, thank you.